Please join me for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
My kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation. But deliver us from evil. Amen.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Spar.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins. Councilmember Monsour.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Let the record show five of the seven members are present. Minutes from June 19, 2023, regular and committee of the hold were distributed. Are there any questions, corrections, deletions? Facing down the minutes, we stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
I do have a report. Finance Committee was held June 21, 2023, 6:33 PM in the Tiffin City Hall. Attending were committee members Kevin Reesner and Chris Monsour, along with Mayor Don Yonatuno, Law Director Brent Howard, Councilmember Cheyenne Thacker, Ken Jones, Finance Director Kathy Kaufman, City Engineer Matt Watson, Lee Wilkinson. The purpose was to discuss mayor's request for legislation, 2332, general contractor license, and any other business that comes before the committee. Reesner read the mayor's request, which notes the presence of this license would assist in ensuring the payment of city income tax by contractors operating within the city. Reesner also read a message from city administrator. The city is requesting this creation of a contractor's license in order to better track those companies working in the city of Tiffin and ensuring that they are properly following our ordinances, most especially filing for income tax collections. This not only ensures that contractors working in the city are paying their fair share of taxes, it also helps ensure the residents are using reputable companies for work being performed within the city. Kaufman noted that this will help tax administrator know about contractors performing work within the city. Monsour asked about the fee. Kaufman noted there will be a $25 fee for the license. Watson explained there would be an application online to collect information such as tax ID, address, phone number, email, and other business contact info. When they apply for the application, they are affirming they will abide by the city's tax policies and allow the finance department to send payment reminders and generate revenue from the fee and taxes collected. Common examples of where this would be practical would be the fiber installers, commercial interior renovators who do not reside in Tiffin. Howard noted this change would be more efficient process than used in the past. Thacker agreed that this would help the accountability factor. The finance director also showed the committee a draft of the application. Monsour moved to direct the law director to prepare legislation for mayor's request, 23-32, and it was seconded by Reesner. The motion carried unanimously. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:40 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Reesner and his report? Yes, law director.
Just to add to that, the, I'm working with the city engineer and others to prepare the legislation. I think it's the intent of the administration that this would go into effect January 1, 2024. So we have a little bit of time. But as I'm researching, there are some questions that have come up that I'm asking for input from the administration. Might even come back to council to clarify kind of what your intent is. But we've got some time. But I'll give a further report after I gather more information.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Law Community Planning, Councilmember Monsour.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Law, excuse me, Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, anyone from that committee have a report?
You go right ahead.
Councilmember Jones.
I have a report. Councilmember Wilkins is not here, as we know. She asked me to read her five-page report.
Moving labor relations.
I stand corrected.
That's okay. You're okay.
Trying to do two things at once.
You're fine.
Not working out.
Did you have something?
I don't have a report from him, but I can just read over what we did, summarize what we talked about. We went over the mayor's request for the appointment of Tracy Citizen Stark to the Board of Health. That was unanimous in moving her on to this body. Also with Brad Reese appointed to the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission and the school resource officer from the City of Tiffin Police Department for Tiffin City Schools. There were some adjustments made to the contract, shortening it from five years to two years and some other cleanup language taken care of during that. And that was all, all votes were unanimous in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. Councilmember Wilkins is not with us this evening. She asked me to read her five-page report. It is lengthy. I was going to summarize the high points as I saw them. Recreation Public Property Committee was held on Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the conference room at City Hall to discuss mayor's request for legislation 2329 regarding protection of public trees from mutilation, the length of yards slash garage sales in the city of Tiffin, and any other business. Attending were committee members Ken Jones and Vicki Wilkins, Mayor Don Yonatuno, Director of Law Brent Howard, City Administrator Nick Nutro, Councilmember Chris Monsour, and community members Keisha Ruder, Carol Dell, Mike Pinkston, and Lee Wilkinson. Wilkins opened the meeting and began a discussion of legislation 2329 regarding protection of public trees. Mayor Yonatuno explained that at her last tree commission training, the two arborists were requesting some legislation for if trees are mutilated, city trees. City Administrator Nutro provided potential legislation from the city of Bowling Green. Councilmember Mike, I'm sorry, Community Member Mike Pinkston explained that he felt it was important to bring this to the city's attention, and he's on the tree commission also, due to all the work being done around the city, particularly on Market Street and any other utility work. He is hoping for stronger penalty for those who damage our trees. He explained that trees take 40 years to grow and shade our streets. And if we lose tree to mutilation or damage, we lose that. Director of Law Howard, I'm sorry, Law Director Howard, explained the city code does have a section dealing with this, Code 541.06. It states, and it goes on, about destruction of shrubs, et cetera, et cetera. City does have a way to pursue someone who negligently damages a tree, like if they were to hit a light pole. He is not sure if we always do that in the past, but he wanted to state that we do have provisions already in the code. Community member Mike Pinkston shared with the group that the city planted two trees on Arbor Day, and Mary Yonatuno and I were there to observe that on April 28 on Benner Street Path. And one of those trees is stolen. I like the word "missing" myself, but stolen. Director of Law Howard pointed out Bowling Green's code requires a permit for excavation and would help us get the administrative process in place if we had that in there. Councilmember Monsour asked if Bowling Green's language can be added to what we already have. And I think they were going to, we're going to check into that. Let me see. Law Director Howard agreed to meet with the arborists to show them the current ordinance that we're talking about and work together and incorporate what they have provided today. That was item one. Item two, discussion of the length of yard sales in the city of Tiffin. On Thursday, June 15, Councilmember Cheyenne Thacker sent an email stating for the last four weeks there's been an ongoing yard sale at 262 Third Avenue, and the neighbors were concerned about their property values. There are laws regarding trash on property, 521.08, which is littering and deposit of garbage, rubbish, junk, et cetera. There is a code, signed code, in 1195.02N. It does permit, does limit temporary signs for such sales to be no more than 15 days per year. Law Director confirmed that the property owner is using this as a residence, and they are in a residential area, and it is not zoned for a business. Community member Carol Dell stated that she would like to give the property owner the benefit of the doubt and give her until at least the end of June to get rid of some of these items. Law Director Howard encouraged the property owner at 262 Third Avenue to look into business locations in the city where she can conduct business. Councilmember Wilkins stated that there are two things from the city we would like to see, the ending of the garage sale, as well as items on the front yard being removed. Councilmember, excuse me, Community Member Carol Dell reiterated that it is bad for the neighborhood and property values to have these items in the front yard. Law Director Howard explained that as a city, we're trying to apply the law. And when someone brings an issue to us, we have to address it and educate the public about what is going on. Councilmember Wilkins said when she spoke with Ann Brickner, the zoning inspector, he didn't believe it would be necessary to have an ordinance regarding garage and yard sales. And she agreed, and so did Councilmember Monsour. With no other business to discuss, the meeting adjourned at 5:37 PM. Respectfully submitted, Council Chair Vicki Wilkins.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have a report. A Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting was held June 21, 2023, at 5:45 PM in the Administrative Conference Room. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Kenneth Jones, Kevin Reesner, and Chris Monsour, along with City Law Director Brent Howard, Mayor Don Yonatuno, City Engineer Matt Watson, Plant Superintendent Kevin Hughes, and members of the public, Lee Wilkinson and Keisha Ruder. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-32, 23-33, Columbia Gas easement, previous downspout legislation ordinance 21-94, and any other business presented. Item one, Hughes presented information on proposed changes to ordinance 21-94 regarding the city's grant program for removing clean water connections from the sanitary system. Currently, there is a $30 application fee for the program. Hughes would like to make the grant more approachable to people who qualify for this grant and has been previously giving full refunds through the program on application fees. He would prefer the fee be removed from the application process. Additionally, Hughes would like to add language allowing citizens using the grant to have other companies do investigative work. With the increase in sewer projects for the long-term control plan, it will ease some of the workload on employees while increasing the speed at which these projects can be completed. Lastly, Hughes mentioned that the current grant has a lifetime limit, one per property. He recently had contact with an individual that has used the grant in the past for backflow preventer, but they also have downspouts connected to the sanitary sewer system. Reesner made a motion to have the law director draft legislation amending ordinance 21-94, revising and restating the grant program, using local funds to assist property owners in removing clean water connections from the sanitary sewer system. Monsour seconded the motion. The vote passed four to zero. Item two, Watson gave information about adding lights to South River Road. Three lights will be added to illuminate the path. The hope is that it will provide light for those that use it to cut through between Sandusky Street and Ella Street, especially children walking to and from school. The area has been greatly improved with other monies from the Tiffin Community Foundation as well. Monsour motioned to have the law director draft legislation authorizing installment of three streetlights on South River Road Trail at or near the River Overlook. Reesner seconded the motion. The motion passed four to zero. Jones and Thacker presented information on lights they would like installed on Third Avenue and Water Street. Keisha Ruder told the community, the committee members, that she and others on Third Avenue would like to see additional lighting added to the street. She gave a petition to the committee. Thacker will provide a copy to the clerk of council. Third Avenue does not have a lot of current utility poles with which to add streetlights. Thacker talked about the lack of light on Water Street near the smaller viaduct. She had heard from residents that they wanted the area more illuminated as the viaduct makes the area even darker. Previously, there were lights on the underside of the viaduct. They were removed because as trains would pass, it would shake the bulbs and break them. There are few poles close to the viaduct. More information is needed, and the issue will be forwarded to the city administrator. Law Director Howard presented information on easement needed by Columbia Gas to continue utility work on Fourth Avenue. The easement is similar in nature to other easements granted by the city for Columbia Gas. Reesner made a motion directing the law director to draft legislation authorizing and directing the mayor to grant an easement from the city of Tiffin, Ohio, to Columbia Gas of Ohio, Inc., for a gas line to serve properties on Fourth Avenue at Wall Street. Monsour seconded the motion. The motion passed four to zero. Watson presented information on legislation necessary to continue the sewer project, inflow reduction CSO 9 through 13 and 15, excuse me, to pursue planning loans for WPCLF for the contract. The loan would have low interest rates to help keep sewer costs lower for citizens. WPCLF will reimburse the city for any upfront cost before the loan is distributed. Watson requested council pass these ordinances, this ordinance, with an emergency and bypass council's three-reading rule. Reesner moved to have the law director draft said legislation. Monsour seconded the motion. The motion passed four to zero. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:32 PM.
Thank you. Any questions regarding Councilmember Thacker's report? Yes, law director.
Just to remind council, ordinance 23-39 is the restatement in its entirety of the grants for removing clean water connections from the sanitary sewer system. This is the fifth time that, or fifth item of legislation, I guess it would be the fourth time, that it's been amended. So all you would need going forward is looking at this ordinance. And so there are many items, provisions, A through N. But just to highlight what the committee said and directed, we've added investigation as an acceptable cost for the grant. We removed the application fee. And we've also created one exception to the one grant per life for a property. And that was if a property had received a, or received a grant for the installation of a backflow preventer, then that property still remains eligible for a grant. So those were just the three changes.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Thacker. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under committee of the hold. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the hold meeting? And we are now under reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mayor Don Yonatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. We do not have any proclamations tonight. And knowing that there were several committee meetings this past week, I kept my report short. Just a reminder, July 4 will be celebrated tomorrow on July 4, and City Hall will be closed. Farmers markets continue every Saturday on Madison Street. Ella Street will be closed to through traffic until the end of November, weather permitting. The demo of the bridge is complete at this time. And the East Perry Street full rebuild is ongoing also. One lane will be open to traffic, but expect possible timing delays. Other utility projects are going on as well. And so like I keep telling you every time, please be patient and allow extra time to navigate around town. At our next meeting on July 17, we will have Joe Creya here from Raftellus with a sewer update. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Okay. Thank you. That was a short report.
It was really short.
Yeah. You delivered. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Wow. Okay. All right. Rent Communications.
We have Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-18, to approve the city's fixed asset policy effective January 1, 2023.
Finance Director's request for legislation F23-18 is prepared for this evening as ordinance 23-42.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-19, to amend the budget ordinance 22-108 to reallocate funds in the American Rescue Plan Act fund budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-19, is prepared for this evening as ordinance 23-44.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-20, requesting that the city of Tiffin enter into an investment management agreement with METER Investments.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-20, will be referred to the Finance Committee.
And we have a notification from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a liquor permit transfer from Heritage IGA Tiffin LLC to Leveraged Success LLC doing business as Heritage IGA Bassetts Market at 479 East Market Street.
Thank you. This notice will be given to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And then we have a letter that was received by neighbors in the Third Avenue area requesting an additional streetlight on Third Avenue between Sean and Wall Street.
Okay. Is that different than, is that just the addition of the one that we're discussing today?
It's from our committee meeting. They brought it to our.
Okay. So it'll be held on file? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That concludes Rent Communications?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We are now under Oral Communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Yes.
I have something from the EMA office.
Okay. Got it?
Tomorrow at the Fourth of July celebration at Hedges Boyer Emergency Management Agency will have a safe room for people to take a look at in preparation for the annual grant that the Ohio EMA puts out each year to help pay for putting in a safe room at your residence for tornadoes, et cetera. So if anybody has questions about that, they can come see me tomorrow out by the tennis courts at Hedges Boyer Park.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? Okay. We are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 23-24, introduced by John Spar. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Tracy Citizen Stark to serve an unexpired term on the Seneca County Board of Health from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 23-24.
Resolution number 23-25, introduced by John Spar. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Brad Reese to serve the remainder of a term on the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2027.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 23-25.
Madam President.
Councilmember Spar.
I'd like to ask for the immediate passage of resolution 23-25.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of resolution 23-25. Is there a second, Councilmember Thacker?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Monsour.
Yes.
Resolution 23-25 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Resolution number 23-26, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the city of Tiffin for planning of wastewater facilities involving the inflow reduction CSO 9 to 13 and 15 project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of resolution 23-26. Councilmember Thacker.
I'd like to ask for immediate passage of resolution 23-26, foregoing council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for immediate passage of resolution 23-26 and suspension of council's three-reading rule. Second. Councilmember Monsour. Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Monsour.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Monsour.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Monsour.
Yes.
Resolution 23-26 passes with a vote of five to zero. Having a stroke.
Ordinance number 23-36, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2024, attached hereto as a part herof, and directing the Director of Finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor on or before July 20, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 23-26. Councilmember Reesner.
Madam President, I ask for passage, I moved passage of ordinance 23-36.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of ordinance 23-36. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reesner.
sanitary sewer system and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-39. Councilmember Thacker.
I'd like to ask for immediate passage of ordinance 23-39. Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-36 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 23-39 introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance amending ordinance number 21-94, revising and restating the grant program using local funds to assist property owners in removing clean water connections from the sanitary sewer system and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-39. Councilmember Thacker.
I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 23-39.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 23-39. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-39 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 23-40 introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to grant an easement from the city of Tiffin, Ohio to Columbia Gas of Ohio Incorporated for a gas line to serve properties on Fourth Avenue at Wall Street and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-40. Councilmember Thacker.
I move for immediate passage of ordinance 23-40 foregoing council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance for 23-40. Okay, there's a second. Is there any, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-40 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Sorry. Ordinance 23-40 passes with a vote of five to zero. I am truly having a stroke today, I guess. Sorry. Wow.
Does that pass five to zero?
Yes, ordinance 23-40 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 23-41 introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing installment of three streetlights on South River Road Trail at or near the River Overlook and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-41.
Ordinance number 43-23-42 introduced by Kevin Reisner. Ordinance amending Section 135.13 of Tiffin codified ordinances, updating the city's fixed asset policy by increasing the amount for a capital fixed asset from $2,500 to $5,000 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-42.
Ordinance number 23-43 introduced by John Spar. Ordinance authorizing the city administrator and chief of police to sign an agreement with the Tiffin City School District to assign a police officer to the district as a school resource officer and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-43. Councilmember Spar.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask for a suspension of the council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 23-43.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 23-43. Is there a second? Councilmember Reisner.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reisner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Mansour.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-43 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number 23-44 introduced by Kevin Reisner. Ordinance amending 2023 budget ordinance 22-108 to reallocate funds into the American Rescue Plan Act fund budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 23-44. Councilmember Reisner.
I move for immediate passage of ordinance 23-44 suspending the city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance 23-44. Councilmember Spar.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance 23-44 is first reading. It's new to me, and as I flip over and look at this one page, I guess for my benefit and the public's benefit, we're talking about adding $55,000 to property and equipment and taking away $306,223.75, making the total zero.